Okay. Okay, then I will, I'm assuming it's already six o'clock. Yep. Okay. So I'll go ahead and call them to order if you'll stand with me and say. All right, let's do this again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, and I'll go ahead and say the invocation since I don't think that we have anyone here to do so. Our Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for this opportunity to gather together. We ask that you will guide and direct our conversations that we might fulfill the will and the plan that you have for our community. Amen. We are starting on article or picking up on Article eight. Well, I guess it's not technically eight, the health and welfare section. Is that correct, Chris? All right, so I guess we'll just go ahead and start with Article one, Board of Health, which I don't believe exists.
Right? I know at least since I've been here, no Board of Health has existed or met. That's not to say that if you deem that to be of value that we couldn't bring that into creation, but I am not aware of any existing.
Okay. Well, I mean, as far as I know with, since it's not something that is used, we could always just go ahead and do away with that section. If everyone else agrees, or if you want to keep it, then we can.
I think fine. I think it's kind of covered by the county, so. I think that area is addressed.
All right, then we'll go ahead and delete that then, Chris.
Okay.
Do you think with the pandemic, do you think there's any need that we might want to look at that at all? Or you're comfortable with that landing with just the county?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would imagine simply this is played out and since they put it kind of to a county decision a lot of the time. And since they kind of had created their own sort of task force, that that seems as though it would be sufficient.
I would agree, but it seems like at the last meeting, Mr. Weiner mentioned something about the county and their decision about a mask, and then that might be tossed to the city. That decision, so.
Right. Yeah, I just don't know if it'd be redundancy if the same people wouldn't be on both.
Who's on the county? Who is on their board? Who's on the Board of Health?
It's more like the task force, right?
As far as I know, the county doesn't necessarily have a a formal Board of Health. They have what is basically a Board of Health for, I believe it's like a four-county region. And Rebecca Johnson leads that, and there are representatives from each county that serve on that board, representing each county. I believe Mr. Houlwater is the representative for Anderson County. And so they kind of make the decision collectively for all four counties together. And then the county commissions of each county can choose to opt out of those recommendations or accept those recommendations from that Board of Health if they so choose to. Rebecca Johnson has the authority to issue orders as the county health officer, but based on the change in the legislature, the county commission essentially, or that happened earlier this summer, the county commissions have the authority to overrule said health officer, just like they do the governor if they choose to. But there is nothing localized specifically for Anderson County other than the recently formed reopening task force. That reopening task force consists of, I believe, around 15 people or so. And so it's a significantly larger group than this here three. But my guess would be that you might choose to include, if you did a kept it this same way, that you might choose one of the positions on that task force to serve on the Board of Health that this provides for. Or you, you know, might change the structure or whatever you'd like to do, but but in terms of, you know, locally, the task force is really all we have as far as specific to Anderson County.
It kind of looks like the powers of this board have nothing to do with, you know, like things of a health nature as far as like COVID or pandemics are concerned. It looks as though they primarily pertain to the sanitary conditions of buildings and premises.
And certainly, you know, you could modify that if you felt like the Board of Health was necessary to deal with this ongoing situation. And have it try to be more geared towards those issues rather than, you know, sanitary sewer issues that, you know, people are having issues with or whatever. But if you don't feel like it's necessary, then we can obviously remove it as well. So whatever you would prefer.
What is the? I don't know, not really the chain of command, but how do you look at it? The county commissioners make the final decision? The task force makes the final decision on things that we do? You know, I mean, what does that look like?
So as far as the pandemic is concerned, the county commission gets the final decision. All the task force can do is make recommendations. What I was referencing last meeting and earlier, you know, last week, this week, was that the, the task force has been engaged in conversations regarding the, the mask mandate that the governor issued back in May. And when the county opted out of that, you know, obviously now it's November, about the task force was discussing going back to the county commission, given the spiking case here recently, and asking that they reconsider that decision. And in the event that the county commission were, decided not to do so, I was expecting that there might be a an effort by the task force to come to the city commission and see if the city commission would be willing to consider such a mandate for the city of Garnet. Last I spoke with the county commissioners regarding the issue. He granted specifically on that issue, city versus county, they felt like the city would be better suited to doing so than the county because there's a lot more space out in the county to spread out. And felt like the, the majority of the risk associated and the need for such a mandate would be with regard to the city limits, and they wanted to leave that decision to the city. That may change. The governor's new mask protocol that was just released. I expect there will be a hefty discussion on that topic come Monday morning, and we'll see what the county commissioners elect to do there. I know the task force hasn't, haven't had a majority weigh in on that topic yet, at least that I've seen. Appreciate JD making it this evening, and if he has anything that has heard further from task members, I certainly would encourage his his knowledge there, but as far as I know, you know, I've heard from a few who have supported the governor's protocol and would like to see that followed here from that task force, but as of last night, I hadn't seen a majority of responses from that task force, so I'm not sure exactly what direction overall will be taken.
And Chris, if I'm right, we can if the, regardless of what the county does, we can opt in or opt out of, of any decision they, they make, right?
If the county decides to adopt the mask mandate or mask protocol, however you like to say it, we cannot opt out of that. We would have the ability to opt in if they decide not to adopt such a mandate. We can't be less restrictive, but we can be more restrictive than what they are.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so where is everyone standing? Do you think that we should go ahead and keep this Article one? Sorry, I'm looking at the, do you, do you all have the new code in front of you, or is it a version of the old code?
The new code is in the book that has this on the front from City Code Financial.
That's what I got.
Okay, good. Good. I just wanted to make sure when I was referring to the different articles that we were on the same page, so.
What we could do is we don't have to start with this one. We could go through some of the others. I would be in favor of probably reworking this. Not necessarily keeping it exactly the way it is, but but that, I don't know where you guys are at.
Commissioner Guine, I'll go ahead and defer to you for right now.
Well, I think a lot of things under the, the way this particular one written, and like you said, Bridget, it's about sanitary conditions and buildings and premises. And I think those things can all be addressed in other parts of the codes. So to me, the, the looks of the premise of this one, I don't see that it's needed myself.
Right. I mean, I would tend to agree. I think that if you're looking for a Board of Health in the sense of how to deal with pandemics, that that's something that's different. I mean, the way this is written has a totally different intent. At least the powers that it was given than something for, that is geared towards the pandemic. Now, if that's something that you wanted, that you all are interested in doing, and you just want to completely overhaul this section to reflect that, then, you know, that's fine. I don't know what direction you want to take this. And that's why I said I want to defer to what you all want to work on, because obviously after the first of the year, I'm not going to be here.
Is there another section that would address that?
That would address governmental response to health issues like, like a pandemic or something community-wide? Not really. So if that is something that you would like to build into the code, then I, I think a Board of Health may be appropriate if that's something you desire. But, but I would recommend significantly tweaking this particular article because that does not accomplish that goal, what we have currently.
I, I agree. Okay, I, I would agree that it isn't necessarily pertaining to what I'm talking about, but I do think we might want to think about putting together a section for a pandemic as a city.
So it kind of sounds like we can go ahead and get rid of this article, but in the future, you all will discuss the possibility of adding something.
And I think like the pandemic, it sounds to me like we could, I mean, if the commission was so inclined, they could have a mask mandate or some of these things. So it could be addressed even without having anything in the code, code, the way I understand.
Very true.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to Article two, nuisances. Does anyone see anything on this first page that needed changed? The eight dash two zero one, I did not have anything underlined for this section.
I didn't see anything on that either.
What about eight dash two zero two, complaints, injury and inspection? I think the, the only thing that I had underlined here was it mentions towards the bottom, all complaints shall be investigated without unnecessary delay. I know in a lot of different areas, it actually specifies what time period things will be addressed in. So I didn't know why in particular this one was wasn't as specific as to list the days or hours or working business days.
That's a good point. There are a number of things throughout the code, and there'll be a few that we address here this evening that are, I would say inconsistencies where we do something very similar elsewhere, but have a different definition or a different approach toward dealing with something. So if you'd like some uniformity, which I certainly think is valuable, maybe we look to try to clean those up and make them uniform.
Yeah, I think that in this case, since it's talking about when complaints shall be investigated, it would probably be good for the city and for whoever is dealing with the complaint to know how long to expect that to happen. So for this section, I, I would like to see that added to it if possible.
Do, do you remember what some of the other timeframes were? Was it 10 days, 30 days?
In terms of dealing with complaints, I can't remember if we've dealt with those in code previously, specifically for complaints. I know other things we've dealt with is normally a 10-day window to have something addressed. If we, say, issue a an order to have something abated or whatnot, that's normally given a 10-day window. And then, you know, we'll grant extensions from time to time if somebody needs a little bit extra time and communicates with us, et cetera. But that 10-day window is pretty standard, but, but again, that's kind of once we've initiated the process. That's not necessarily from point of first communication with a complaintant.
It looks like at the end, there's something about it being the commission's got to be aware or something if it's been 30 days or longer. The complaint was made, is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, it also says that they can't even be like, the inquiry inspections can't take place unless there is a resolution of the city commission of Garnet, which I thought was kind of strange as well. That's a few sentence or a couple of sentences above the section that I initially was talking about, the investigated without unnecessary delay. It says that the city manager may make such inquiry and inspection when he or she observes conditions which appear to constitute a nuisance and shall make such an inspection upon being directed to do so by resolution of the city commission of Garnet. I would think that if it read upon consensus of the city commission of Garnet as opposed to an official resolution.
And I would suggest that, do you want it to be that process regardless, I mean, when, when it's believed to be a nuisance by two or more persons, they knew this nuisance exists. So it could be, we have a couple residents who write a formal complaint on something or other and want to see us look into that. And do you want that to come before you, before we actually try to go and investigate?
I think it, it seems like it would be more appropriate that it reach us if it's not handled within that 30-day period as opposed to coming to us beforehand. Like if there's, if there seems to be an issue where it's not getting resolved, it should come before the commission.
Okay. I, I would concur. I think that that makes a better process. That way, if, in most cases, administratively, we try to handle the, the issue, and if that isn't a successful resolution, then it comes before the governing body.
That sounds good.
Are you all looking at it? Okay.
Are you going to try and put a timeframe in there, like specific dates? Are you going to wait and make sure that it's consistent with other timeframes throughout them?
So I was trying to find, I believe in five, there's a couple sections that deal with. I guess this is fair housing, I believe. So a complaint against the fair, fair housing policy is one section where we deal with complaints. And that's, I believe you decided to give one year. I don't think we want to give that long to deal with a complaint in this, in this instance. The other section, the other chapter is chapter two, dealing with, it looks like dogs. And let me look that up real quick. It appears as if somebody making a complaint on a dog.
One thing I'll throw in there, I think a lot of times if there is any kind of complaint issue, I think the property owner typically has like 10 days unless they work out another agreement. They have days to comply, so to me, if the two complaints are, are made in writing, that this city ought to act in the, in the same timeframe, I would think.
It seems like acting with some expediency would be necessary because some of the issues of what qualifies a nuisance, such as dead animals or stagnant pools of water, if it's summertime, should be something that is addressed sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
Yeah, and, and the section dealing with the dogs, it does not reference a complaint regarding anything coming to the city. It's dealing with complaints, basically tickets, citations issued to people for mistreatment of animals, et cetera. So this is the first instance where we're dealing with these types of complaints within this code.
Okay, so 10 days timeframe is going to be put in there then?
I can set that.
They're paying a grants with that?
I don't know. I feel like it should be a little bit sooner than that. Um, or a little, try, the turnaround should be a little bit quicker that people start looking into that.
You do five business days?
Yeah, I think so.
I would, I would agree with that.
No.
Okay, so does anyone else have any other questions or comments on eight dash two zero two?
No.
Okay, eight dash two zero three.
I had no notes.
I don't either.
I don't have anything underlined.
Okay, um, how about for the rest, eight dash two zero four through two zero nine? Did anyone have anything on those?
I didn't have anything marked.
Okay, I don't. That's the only reason I was moving forward.
I have some notes that say we might change some verbiage throughout the chapter. From restricted male to certified male. I don't know.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, it looks like they change, what they say, they, on this document they give us that has the changes. It looks like they did change it.
Okay.
Let's see, I guess it did say it added on eight dash two zero seven B. It added subsection B, that was not their previously recent change in state law that allows easier methods of nuisance notification like door hangers. If other methods had failed, so that's the only new section that was added based on Kansas law. Which I think that we kind of, if I remember correctly, the way we were dealing or the utility department was dealing with shut offs and issues they were having, they were actually taping something to the door, weren't they, at one point? So the idea of a door hanger isn't entirely foreign.
Yeah.
So I'm fine with the rest of this.
I have to.
Jody, was there anything else specifically that you had?
No.
Okay, I think let's go ahead and move on to Article three, weeds. Eight dash three zero one. Any questions?
I had none.
Okay. Let's see, eight dash three zero two, the definition section. I didn't have anything there.
I didn't either.
Okay, and eight dash three three. Um, I had a few things underlined there. I wasn't sure, Chris, for, if we just wanted to leave this as a public officer or if you wanted to change, it says the city manager shall designate a public officer. If you wanted to be more specific, like code enforcement officer whoever is appropriate for that, or do you just want to leave it generic?
I, I think it's fine the way it is because in the event that something happens to where, you know, code enforcement officer is on vacation or whatever the case, and we need to get something dealt with, it'd be nice to be able to say, okay, today I designate you to go take care of this. Without it happening to specifically be one position person.
The only other question I had too was on number four under that section. It says that, that if the owner, occupant, or agent in charge of the property does not cut the weeds, the city or its authorized agent will cut the weeds and assess the cost of the cutting, including a reasonable administrative fee. It says reasonable administrative fee, but it doesn't actually state what that is. Do we have a fee that is typically charged that?
There's a
Is that listed somewhere?
I see it. Like seventy five hour, I can't remember.
Okay, I saw that. Yeah, it's on, that's on D under eight dash three zero four D, it says, I guess I'll be charged at the rate of $75. So that, so that's in every case, Chris?
Yes, so, you know, we may, we, we could potentially change that to say, including the fee described in section three or four D, or however you want.
That's exactly what I was going to say. That way, whenever you do, or if ever you do change it, it'll automatically change that section too. So I think that's a good idea to reference that.
Okay, it sounds, sounds fine.
Also, I just wanted to clarify for number six, it says that no further notice shall be given prior to removal of weeds during the current calendar year. So does that mean that if someone has an issue and it's brought to their attention by the city? And it's, I don't know, is it just a one-time notice for that person to that property if it, like later in the year, they have another weed issue? It's not going to be something that the city brings to their attention. They're just going to handle it automatically. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, is that how it currently works for the people who are, okay?
I, I do know that that is something that has came up, that has been frustrating for some landowners. But the time that it would take in every case to notify all over again, that hey, your yard is too tall again, we're going to come mow it again. That would require a lot more either mail or time, et cetera.
Do you know about how many properties we're dealing with right now on a consistent basis?
I believe that number was reduced this year. We're probably somewhere around maybe eight that we're more actively maintaining ourselves as far as the entire property.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had on this section. Did anyone have anything else? On eight dash three zero three?
No.
Okay, eight dash three zero four. I do not have anything to anyone else.
I did not.
I do not.
Okay, what about eight dash three zero five through three zero eight?
I didn't have anything marked.
I don't either.
And the, the only thing as well, sorry, that I did have written down here as far as a potential suggestion for the commission was rather than having it set at the rate structured in D, three or four D, was to have a tiered structure. Because we do have some property owners who just use us as a mowing service. For instance, the Union Pacific Railroad is one who uses us as a mowing service. The $75 an hour fee is not something that they bat an eye at. And I believe they have mowed more this year than they, than they did in years past, but you know, a lot of cities will do something like the first time it's at this rate and, and the second time within a 12-month period, it increases, or second time in a, in a calendar year, it increases to a higher rate. You know, you could say instead of 75 with a hundred dollar minimum charge, it could be, you know, 150 at, at a hundred dollars an hour, or, or whatever. But my suggestion would be maybe to have a tiered structure there so that way we're not just utilized as a mowing service. The, the intent for the The, the intent for the city, um, in this regard is not to generate revenue. Um, we don't want to be a mowing service for, for people. You know, if you're going to rely on us to be your mowing service, there's a lot cheaper options out there. We would rather you find somebody else to do it. Hire a local contractor if you can't do it yourself. And if seventy-five dollars an hour, uh, isn't having people understand that you're better off hiring a private contractor, then maybe, you know, we increase that for tiers, but, uh, I leave that to you and what you want to do.
Yeah, I would be fine with the idea of that. Um, if you wanted to create something for us to look at, um, the next time we discuss the code section, we might be able to revisit it, if everyone is okay with that.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a good idea.
I have one thing on, uh, eight three oh eight.
Okay.
On the very end, it talks about land with less than two acres on its partial. One thing that we're running into is some of these agriculture permits is they may, the, they may have a house and some other stuff on their two-acre partial and they're only maybe using a half an acre or something that they're getting an agriculture permit for. And that we're running into issues there. To where a lot of it is people are using a, there's a few lots here in town that people get an agriculture permit and they have the slot of two acres. But the part that they're actually paying is probably less than an acre or a half acre.
I can't, so does the city currently do anything with those properties? I mean, are they mowing what they don't? Hey?
No, they, they try to do it under the agriculture permit and so far all those have been out of compliance. And honestly, there, there's no way, I mean, our agriculture permits themselves need to address because they require three cuts in a year. Anybody that does hang or anything knows that all you're going to do is create weeds by cutting something three times in a year for hay ground. But these, these other ones, I mean, they're probably not, and there should be something addressing how long those bales of hay sit there after they've been baled.
I, I think that we actually, there was a section not too long ago that we had started kind of discussing that. Or no, maybe that was in a meeting where we were talking about that. Um, just recently, wasn't it?
Yeah, there was a meeting here a few months ago where we discussed this. Um, and you were, uh, the directive from the commission at the time was that you were in favor of keeping the agricultural permits, uh, and essentially I believe gave guidance to have us kind of modify the permit at year end, um, to better suit what we need to do so that Kurt and I can, uh, we, the plan was we're going to try to sit down with somebody who does farming, you know, it's well outside of my, my expertise and, and say, really, so, um, you know, according to what we've heard thus far, the three cuts in a year isn't really sufficient to, to get good hay. Um, so it'd be much more likely to get two cuts in a year. Um, but on the same, so we might, uh, instead of requiring three cuts, we might only require two cuts, allow them to get better hay usage. Uh, but in the same hand, require the bales to be out of there within a certain timeframe, which we don't require right now. Um, may look to require, uh, a, a certain amount of area on the outside of the property to be mowed, uh, finished mowed to where it's not, you know, hay ground all the way up to the curb or to the ditch. Um, and so, you know, we can have a, a nicer looking area even if it is a, a hay field. Uh, but we do run into an issue with the, the two acres of land. If, if we go that route and say, well, you need, uh, to have a strip on the, uh, perimeter of your, of your hay ground that is finished mode. Um, and they say, well, then that's going to reduce my acreage down and, and I'm, am I still going to qualify? I think we need some guidance there as far as how to address that.
Chris, how many properties like that do we have around town? I'm, I'm trying to think here off the top of my head. I can only think of about maybe two or three, um, where that would become an issue.
Uh, Officer Donovan, do you happen to remember that number? I know you're not in your office.
Yeah, I, I'm not in my office, um, but I can think of at least five right off hand that are barely meeting that acreage mark, um, that have qualified. But as Kurt pointed out already, that acreage mark also includes their house, their driveway. The entire property, not just the portion that they're hanging.
So it's not just the field, so to speak, okay?
And I, I think that's where we'd like some clarification would be. We would like to see it be, if you're going to have it be two gra, two acres of, of farm ground, it'd be two acres of farm ground, not a two-acre lot that you're farming half an acre.
Okay, I, I think it should be the, there's a, of ag-related use and not your, your dwelling or driveway or easements and stuff shouldn't be a part of that. Two acres, I, I don't think.
Yeah, I agree with that too. I think that should be clarified in there.
Hey, Chris, this says, um, under eight dash three zero eight, that the agricultural use, um, permit is subject to rules and regulations adopted by the administrative authority. To, I mean, are they talking about rules and regulations that are specified here or what administrative authority are they talking about? Just the city?
That's my interpretation. So that's why I brought it to you here a few months ago was because we were looking to change the rules and regulations. And
Well, I mean, there aren't really any rules and regulations, right, aside from this little paragraph?
Pretty much. So we, I was expecting to have a decent number of people upset with us because now we're going to be enforcing rules and regs on them uh, with regard to this pasture ground, hay ground, et cetera, that, that has never been enforced before. I just wanted to give you a heads up and understand that when we roll this out come the beginning of the year, this is something that, uh, we may get some, some flack on because, hey, we're going to, uh, expect people to remove their hay bales within a certain amount of timeframe or whatnot, because we have hay bales that are sitting in some of these fields for years um, that need to get out of there.
I don't know if the hay bale's sitting there for a long time. I, I don't have a problem with moving those. But a, but I do think we should consider people that have been doing this for a long time and changing it on them. So, um, I guess I need to really understand what, what is the real problem with what we're doing. Yeah, I have a, I sit close to a property that they do an excellent job. It's mowed all the way around the perimeters. They hay it and, and they get the bales moved. I don't know if it's exactly two acres. But I'm just saying, I, I think they've followed all the rules that you've talked about, other than maybe it might not be exactly two acres.
That's not, i- is where we're running into is, for example, let's say like your property line, that hayfield is within twenty yards from the side of your house. And that's the, where some of these that we're running into. And there, it's just essentially maybe essentially equivalent to a house lot. But the house sits on two acres and it butts up to other homes fairly close and they're not maintaining it and they're, when they bail them, they, and a lot of it has noxious weeds in it. I mean, that's why they don't take the bales off or don't use them, because the livestock's not going to eat them. And those are the kind of issues, like I, I, I know the one you're talking about, they maintain theirs quite well. There's another one that does, that does a very good job. There's about two or three that use it as a way that they don't have to mow. Is essentially is what it comes down to. And those are going to fall well under two acres. And our biggest complaints that we get from residents have to do with where it butts up pretty close to their property, to the back of their house or the side of their house where the stuff's just growing and i- it creates wildlife to come in and from the hayfields into their property and things along those lines. That, that's the biggest complaint.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to address what you're talking about and not mess with somebody who has complied with the rules and does an excellent job.
Well, and I'm not sure, but they may not be. Uh, you know, they could be if it's under two acres, but I, I'm not on that particular lot. Um, but, you know, if they're doing everything right, uh, then in fact, what we're looking to actually propose, I think, would actually be more beneficial for them. Because instead of requiring three cuts a year, we'd be requiring two cuts a year and they'd get, uh, better feed for livestock. Um, but, you know, that's, I, I'm not sure with regard to the, uh, adjacent property to you, if it's where it falls within that two-acre rule. I can look it up real quick.
Yeah, my only hangup is that, if, because they're doing everything else right, I'd hate to, um, I'd hate, hate for that to happen to any property owner. If I'm doing everything right and all of a sudden that maybe I, I bought this property as two acres, but now you're going to say I can't count where my house, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I kind of agree with you, Jody. I wonder if, uh, I wonder if we had something in there that if they got, uh, cited so many times for a period of time that they would be at risk of losing their ag permit, a- and so the ones that are complying and following the rules are not penalized for that are, that are not paying attention to the rules and taking care of it like they should.
You, you said like a grandfather clause, subject to, um, to losing that status if they don't comply with, uh, the rules other than, uh, you know, the acreage, so to speak?
Yeah, I could probably live with that because that person that I'm thinking of, they, they do comply with all the rules. The only thing I don't know is if it's under that acres. So it wouldn't, as long as they continue to do what they're doing, they would
It appears to me that the lot itself is right at two point nine acres, according to this, uh, to the property search. Uh, but that does include the house. So if you take the house out of the equation, um, my guess would be it's probably still going to be real close to right at, uh, two acres.
I really think for the purpose of, um, this discussion relating to this section where it says permit subject to rules and regulations adopted by the administrative authority, the way that reads is really strange. Um, if there are rules and regulations regarding it, it would be in this book. So I feel as though it should be added as a subsection to eight dash three zero eight. If there is, or if there are additional rules and regulations. So then it just is the governing body.
Yeah, there, because there is several rules with inside that permit that I agree should be listed with inside the ordinance.
Okay. So Chris, why don't you get a list of, um, after discussing it, what potential rules and regulations should be associated with this part of the code? See if we can't get this added or updated into it.
And I'm, I'm not hearing very good. And so eight dash three zero eight, we're going to do some investigation and revisit that one?
Yes.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, was there anything else from, um, this section? Article three. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to article four, dangerous structures. Any questions over eight dash four zero one and four zero two? And four zero? Okay. All right, what about eight dash four zero four?
Uh, and four zero four, just a couple grammatical things. Uh, I don't believe the hyphen is needed between is and filed. And the very bottom sentence of A, uh, law is separated there. So nothing major, just grammatical stuff, but.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm reading this wrong, but I have underlined the word, so I don't even know how to describe this. It says, in about in the middle of the paragraph, it says such complaints shall contain a notice that a hearing will be held before the public officer or his designated agent at a place, the rain? What is this? I
I missed that one earlier.
I had that underlined too. I just wasn't sure what it meant.
Yeah, I didn't know if I was just totally missing what this is supposed to be, but I think there's something missing here.
I would be clear with that. One second, I'll look at the old code and see
Okay.
What it's supposed to say. At a place therein. It should be the rain, it should be therein.
Oh, there, okay. That makes sense. Thank you. I'm just trying to figure out if this first section, section A, has anything that takes the, I mean, knowledge of what is going on to the city commission because, I mean, since it's dealing with dangerous structures and it says that the city manager, um, you know, is dealing with properties that might be unfit for human use or habitation. I was just trying to see if there was anything here that brings it before the commission, because that seems like a pretty big deal to deem a structure unfit for human use or habitation.
So the current process, uh, this is basically dealing with condemnation, um, and the current process is that it goes to a, uh, to a hearing, um, the hearing officer. I can either be the hearing officer or I can appoint a hearing officer. Um, in the past, that has either been the city manager or the building official, such as Garrett, who is joining us here this evening. The, what I've been looking at here recently is the possibility of maybe, uh, a, uh, a board, um, to, to hear those, uh, those condemnations, uh, instead of it just being a city staff person, whether myself or Garrett. Uh, I have a board comprised of said, uh, say Garrett, as well as, you know, uh, a couple of different people in town. You know, maybe a contractor, maybe a plumber, you know, a variety of people who may have some degree of, of, uh, experience in this field. What was just kind of my, my general thought. I talked to a couple of people about it and gauged some interest and and had some interest in it. And so, uh, was thinking about moving in that direction, uh, as it's up. You know, I have the authority to decide who's going to, who's going to hear that, uh, be the public officer for that, but, um, you know, th- that's really for somebody to make their case that, you know, why you shouldn't condemn my property, why you shouldn't uh, try to tear my house down. And that's kind of the, the purpose of it anyways.
And, and I assume that they're informed if, when it goes to a hearing that they have the, they have the right to inform the commission and, uh, and bring it before the commission, correct?
So the, I believe the way this re- reads, the appeal process, um, actually goes through district court.
Yeah, that was the weird thing for me is that I didn't actually see, unless I missed it, that's what I was trying to figure out, um, if this effort is something that comes to the city commissioner, even, um, making the city commission aware of the issue, which I'm sure that seems like common sense that eventually the city commission would be made aware, but I'm just surprised that I didn't see anything in here. Um, pertaining to actually listing notify the city commission or upon approval of the city commission.
Uh, if you would so desire, I mean, we could have uh, kind of a two-step appeal process. I believe at some point it's, uh, with regard to property like this, it needs to be able to go to the court. Uh, if somebody wants to take it to that level, but, you know, we could have an intermediary step if they're not happy with the decision made by the, by city staff or this board or whoever the hearing officer or hearing board is, um, they can appeal up to the city commission. And then if they're unhappy with the city commission, um, the decision, they can appeal up to district court, i- if you would like to have that, uh, that intermediary step.
What about, um, the intermediary step seems, uh, I don't know, a little unnecessary, but I was thinking within the context of uh, section A where it says, or whenever it appears to the city manager, um, or his designated agent on his own motion, that any structure is unfit for human use or habitation. He shall, you know, start the preliminary He shall, you know, start the preliminary investigation. It could be appears to the city manager. Or his designated agent upon approval of the commission, or I don't know, I just feel like there needs to be something that. Brings it to the commission.
I think I'm okay with them bringing it to the commission, but I don't have a problem with them going through the process that they have.
Right, and that's kind of what I was thinking too. I feel like there at least needs to be.
Sure we're aware of it, but I think we need to get in the mix of it.
I agree.
That's a good idea.
So maybe we'll provide notification to the commission. You know, I mean, adding that somewhere, Chris.
At the point in which an investigation is being under undertaken or at the point at which we're gonna. Basically move forward with the condemnation hearing or when would you like to, because there's a number of situations in which we might. Investigate a property that, well, this didn't pan out, this is, you know, we got a complaint, let's say.
I would think that at the point where you are deeming it unfit is whenever you should probably notify the commission.
That they're gonna take action, that the city wants to take.
Could I ask a question? Would that process be going through Garrett? And then through Terry and then to the city commission? Is that is that kind of what you are? The process that you're talking about there, Bridget?
It looks, I, it depends if this, if it's the city manager or Garrett, whoever it is, once they get to the point of. They have the complaint and they have deemed this structure necessary, then they can just notify the commission and move forward whatever they want. I mean, it's not necessarily to even, you know, seek approval or something, it's just to notify the commission. I don't know who, I mean, I don't know in every case if it would just be the city manager or if it would just be. Or who he would choose as his designated agent, but I just felt like there should be something that provided notification back to the commission. Because I saw that that was the only thing that was kind of lacking. I think, I guess they refer to it as the governing body throughout this, so you could just put governing body and say city commission.
Yeah, I saw that too. Thanks for the clarification.
Did anyone else else have any questions or anything listed on eight dash four zero four?
I think maybe whenever, Mr. Weiner, whenever you finish reworking that, I probably would like to just look at the verbiage.
That's, I don't know if I'm immediate here or not, that's, so what's the final decision on that? Then it'll be to seek approval or just to inform? The board whenever that we kick the process off.
To notify, just notify. Okay, so eight dash four zero five, dangerous conditions. I had, I was a little confused by some of this because there were some of it that seemed. As though it was dealing with more than just dangerous conditions, you know, like when it starts talking about unsightly appearances and character of the properties in the neighborhood. I didn't know if this section was kind of. I don't know if it was added to try to control for more things than just dangerous structures. Or I guess I didn't see how an unsightly appearance that could be considered a blight to an adjoining property would necessarily be a dangerous condition.
That's a good point, and I do believe that. Most of the things that are dealing with, say, unsightly conditions are. Addressed in the property maintenance code that we also have adopted, but. From the original code sixty-one, this was a part of it anyways, for whatever reason.
So I I feel like whenever we, if you could look through this and. I don't know, we we should probably look through it and decide what is constitutes dangerous conditions as opposed to just. Things of unsightly appearances and whatnot.
I agree, because it's just like an entire bunch of stuff thrown.
Yes, that sightliness is not dangerous, so.
So Chris, do you mind working through that paragraph to take out those things that are. Not strictly a danger, I don't know, to society.
Good guess on that one.
Oh, Chris, just so I know too, you had mentioned that this was elaborated on elsewhere. Which part of the code did it? Go into more detail, because that sounds like it would be more in the minimum housing code, which I know Garnett doesn't have. Because that was a new section that the city code was adding to this. Is that what you were talking about? Or was there somewhere else that we have this already?
I apologize, what was the first part of that question?
That addresses things like blight.
So the, actually, the property maintenance code is one of the building codes. And that's one that addresses a lot of these things. Painting your building, keeping your.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so eight dash four zero six. Well, actually, let me see if I. Or any other, I guess, eight dash four zero six through eight dash four ten. The only thing I, oh, go ahead.
I'll just, real quick, just. I get it, you want to try to remove the things that are not necessarily specifically dangerous. But was curious just with regard to, say. Disrepair or uncleanliness, you know, those types of things. You know.
No, you're fine. So like when it says something such as unsightly appearances that constitute a blight. To the neighborhood or character of the properties and then, you know, that hurts the character of the properties. Unsightly stored or parked material, equipment, supplies, machinery, or parts thereof, so. I guess it's really the unsightly part, because if there's stuff that is stored in an inappropriate manner that could introduce vermin infestation, that's one thing. But the fact that it's unsightly doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be dangerous.
And I agree with with that, and I guess my thought would be. I can't remember if we have that particular type of issue addressed. Section, what it be?
Adopted some of them new codes and I think that the, those kind of things are addressed in in those codes and. Most things slightly are not are not dangerous, so I I I think that verbiage should be taken out of this eight dash four oh five.
And some of the things are, but not necessarily all of them, so, but that. I can try to see, I guess, if there's anything in particular that may not be addressed in some other section of the code.
Right, and you could always reference those sections in this section if it needs further clarification too. I mean, just point them to the section that has the. Oh, I guess just for dangerous, you wouldn't have to do that even. I did just notice too, Chris, that it keep, it says municipally instead municipality. On that third sentence there. It also says that under eight dash four zero eight, section A.
So really, I I think on some of the things, if they're not in the property maintenance code. That some of these things could be nuisances, you know, you were referencing where it says unsightly. Stored or packed, parked material, equipment, et cetera, you know, some of those things could could more probably appropriately fit in nuisances. If they're not. Already addressed in the property maintenance code or something, so we may look to. To try to shift that over to nuisances if it's if it's not addressed elsewhere. If if that would be agreeable to the commission.
Yeah, it looks like that might already be over there, like you had mentioned too, so, yeah, that would be fine. Let us know what you're thinking about moving if you do move it.
On eight dash four oh five and then say next city commission meeting, we some few of these things, we can. Go over the new verbiage and see what what we think of it then.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I doubt I'll have it all ready for our next one, but probably the first one in December.
What, you can't work faster than that? Come on, Chris. It's not like there's a holiday coming up.
I had one thing that I saw I had highlighted here. Eight dash four zero seven, I don't know if there was a date or a timeframe to where they can issue an appeal. That was the only thing I had highlighted on that one.
That's a good, good question, Cody, and there probably should be one. My thought would be thirty days, but I'll want to check with Terry and make sure that there's no state requirements on that. That we have to give forty-five days or can't be longer than thirty days or something.
Alright, thanks.
Did you have anything else or anyone have anything else from eight dash four zero six to four ten? Okay, I did not eat there. Okay, so article five, eight, insurance proceeds, lean. I didn't really have a lot marked in this section. Did anyone have a section they wanted to focus on here?
The the biggest thing that I would suggest with regard to this is that we broaden this. This was. Established essentially to cover in the event that. There be a a fire or. I believe that this is the, that fun.
Receiving claims against the insurance company that makes sure that they're. Pressed like it was supposed to be.
Yeah, I was thinking it was supposed to be specified. I'll have to touch base with. Terry real quick on on something with regard to the fire proceeds, but. I believe that basically this is set in place, so that way, similar to a situation that we had out on. Eastern side of town where you have a fire, you can also utilize it if there's. Tornado that comes through town significantly damages a property that if a if a insurance company is going to pay out. It's a total loss on the structure, let's say, they are not supposed to give the. The insurance payouts to the, directly to the, for the property owner. Essentially, you're supposed to. Hold at least, I think it's what seventy-five percent, if based by the policy covering it has been impacted, then. It's basically supposed to be held so that they either have to repair it with that money. It's basically held in an escrow for them to repair the structure or tear it down, one way or the other, but they can't just. Take the money, skip town and and go and leave a now half-fallen-down structure. In town, then the city is going to end up having to come in and demo, so that's kind of the the purpose of it and. It's supposed to be utilized for natural disaster type situations.
And that's all addressed, right, Chris, on the. Eight dash five oh two?
Yeah, I I believe so.
Looks like it runs through the county, maybe, yes, treasurer of the county.
That all should be sufficient.
I didn't have anything clear up to eight, five, ten. I didn't have anything marked.
Commissioner Cole, did you have anything?
I'm not seeing anything underlined, so.
Okay, so, Chris, did you have anything else you wanted to add here or are you good right now? Okay, good. Okay, so these next two sections, article six and article seven, were not previously here. They said that these are common nuisance articles that some cities adopt, so we have the option of putting this in, but we do not have to. I would say, I mean, just my personal opinion for what we have going before us. What I would recommend doing is if you all want to adopt an environmental code or minimum housing code, then I. I I would think that this is something you would want to take some time to discuss based on what might be going on currently in the community. Otherwise, since it's not a part of the code that we have right now, I didn't really necessarily see that we needed to. Put it in at this time. So, I don't know, but unless you all are interested in having it put in now, then we can go ahead and. And run through these.
You're saying you're suggesting essentially tabling these two sections for the time being and moving on.
And moving on to what we actually have in our code as opposed to what city code put in here or suggested that we put in the code. It's up to you all though.
Isn't article seven, isn't it addressed under the newly adopted?
So there are a number of things addressed in article seven that are not addressed in either the property maintenance code. Or anywhere else anywhere else in our existing code, so the minimum housing code. Definitely does do have some additional regulations. I would say real quick on eight five oh nine. Second to bottom sentence withholding shouldn't have a hyphen in it.
Thank you. So like for instance, Greg, when I was looking through the minimum housing code on eight dash seven zero six. Regulations for the use and occupancy of dwellings, item B basement or cellar. Says the basement or cellar of any dwelling shall be reasonably dry and ventilated and shall be kept free from rubbish accumulation, and I just wrote seriously. Isn't that what a basement is for, like all of your junk? So I don't know, there was a lot, there was a lot in the minimum housing code and especially in the environmental code that I thought was. It expanded from a regulatory standpoint, the power of the city considerably. And so I feel like that is something that needs to have due attention paid to it. Hopefully in a more public, I mean, I know this is a public meeting, but one that the public can come to. So I I just didn't think that this should be part of the updating of the code, because this is an entirely new section. That I think that it would be value having the community input before adopting.
And I I would be interested in seeing what what are in these sections here. That is not addressed by the newly adopted public building code.
Okay, I can try to have Garrett address some of those. Whances of what may be the same, what may be difference with regard to what we already have.
What are your thoughts?
I I'm fine to table on. Because I agree, I I think we're gonna have to, if we decide to go through those. It's gonna take some time and some real thought.
Are you wanting to skip junk motor vehicles on private property as well? It's new as well.
Yeah, let's go ahead and skip that, since it's not a part of the original code. It's not really considered, that's just entirely new, that's not really updating or adjusting, so we can also hold that or reserve that for a later discussion. All right, so did we want to try to move on to chapter nine municipal court? I know we didn't talk about doing that, so I don't know how far ahead anyone has made it, or do you want to save that in the next few sections for the next meeting?
I would rather save it so I've got time to go through it before we discuss.
Yeah, I agree, because I would have to read through it right now to, to assess, you know, what's going on, since we weren't planning on getting through all of that so quickly.
I would say it is just one page, but I'm fine if you.
This is Cody. I, I just wanted to kind of maybe get a timeframe of, of Bridget, I, I know you're trying to get through this. I just wanted to kind of get maybe a timeframe from you of what you thought you want to get this accomplished by.
Oh, well, you know, my goal was just to try to be intentional with working through it, so I, I was hoping we would actually be able to present you all with as close to a finished product as possible, so you can just adopt it, since this has been sitting here, I don't know, what, since two thousand seventeen, that's whenever they, I guess, gave it to us, since it says code two thousand seventeen. So I mean, it's really, but I mean, it's also the holiday season, so I think getting people together is a little bit more difficult, but I, I just figure we do our best and see how far we can get it if people are okay with being intentional with our time and devoting some time to it. I feel like if we're not adding these newer sections that are suggested to from city code, it shouldn't be that difficult if we all do our homework beforehand to get through it as quickly as we did like this last one. So if, I mean, it depends on how motivated everyone is. I, I obviously just wanted to try to help a little bit to, you know, get through this process, so it's not hanging over all of you. Again, because then you'll get caught up in budget season, and it seems like there's always an excuse to put it off, so. I don't really have a direct timeline, it's just when people are able to get together, and if we can, you know, get through as many sections as possible during one, if a lot of these are really short sections, which it looks like they are coming up, then we can plan on trying to get through some more than just one per meeting, so, like, it looks like municipal court, police, it's really short, public offense, then their, public property is our next biggest one that we have.
Why don't we do them? Municipal court, police, and public for the next time.
Yeah, public offenses. Yeah, I would say aiming through, since those are all really short to public property.
Yeah, but I, I don't think I'd try to include public property in the next one, it's.
So, sorry, so you're, you want to squeeze three of them in here in the next meeting, Jody, is that what you said?
I think we could, I think we could do that, municipal court, police, and public offenses.
I would, yeah, that would be good. I would say if you have time to start looking through public property, I would imagine we're going to get through those pretty quickly, but if we don't, then that would, that'd be good. Oh, I guess this is our next meeting, are we going to try to do it right after the city commission meeting, because if that's the case, then we might only make it through those. Are we going to try to do that, Chris?
Oh.
What does the, what does the agenda look like for Tuesday? That's gonna be the Tuesday before a holiday.
Oh, that's true.
It's not gonna be incredibly long, but it's not gonna be an incredibly short meeting either. I, I, I would say we might be able to get through, we might be able to get through them, if you wanted to stick around till probably nine o'clock, ten o'clock, but if you're not wanting to to stay that late, then probably suggest shoot for the meeting.
I, I mean, I would imagine with municipal court through public offenses, that shouldn't really take that long. I mean, what are your thoughts, Chris?
I, I agree, those chapters are relatively short. So unless you are looking to change significantly on any of those, my expectation would be that we could probably knock them out. You know, in probably an hour and a half, two hours tops, but that'd be my thought.
Okay. I mean, we did pretty good today with this section, which was actually a little bit longer. So yeah, I, I don't know, I am going to be in town for the holidays anyway, so, I mean, it being a Tuesday, it doesn't really affect me, since we're already meeting. Are you all okay with doing those three sec, or up to public offenses after our next meeting, if it's not too long, the meeting itself?
I, I, I think that's a good goal to have.
Okay.
I'm just looking head through all these, and I had very, very few things marked, so.
Okay.
As it stands right now, I don't have a lot that I'm seeing as I flip through here.
And I'm mute myself, I'm already in. I, I just wanted to say, I, I just now, just this week, got ahold of the city code, I know, that was on me to not do so, but I would like a little bit more time to kind of look through it, but it's totally up to you guys, obviously, so.
Yeah.
So I got.
Well, yeah, these sections that we're talking about are so short, you shouldn't have any problem getting through those, I wouldn't think.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, for the next meeting, we're not going to go, try to go through public property, that's too long. But just for, for municipal court to public offenses.
If we're able to tackle those at our next meeting on Tuesday, the next date that I have for one of these meetings, for a standalone code, is December third, another Thursday, both Jody and Bridget, you indicated that you have availability that day, Greg, I'm not sure about your availability on the third, but Commissioner Cole and Commissioner Brookhaven and us both indicated that those dates would work for them, so if we might be able to get through those three small chapters come Tuesday night, and then that'd give us almost two full weeks to, to study the public property section, and try to tackle that on December the third, if that sounds like a plan for everybody.
Okay, yeah, I know that, I mean, that sounds good, I'm up for that.
Yeah.
Is the third a Tuesday, or?
The third is a Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just don't have a calendar in front of me.
The, I think there's one more date in December that looked like December seventeenth, two weeks after that Thursday, so the third, the seventeenth, both look like good dates, if Commissioner Wayne, you're available as well to try to hold some of these standalone meetings, assuming everybody still has that available.
Oh, I will get back to you, I need to look at the calendar, talk to Stacey.
Okay.
And I'll let you know, but I would do, do my best to make them work, both them dates.
All right, well, is there any other, anything else that needs to come before the commission, before we adjourn? All right, so then I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn during here, second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much for everyone who was able to participate and listen on the call, thank you, Chris, for answering all of the questions and being willing to make the updates to the code.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, see you later.